All right, I'm going to call the city council meeting for June 1st, 2021 to order. Misty, can we have roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Waters?
Here.
Mrs. Bishop?
Here.
And Mr. Fields previously informed staff that he be unavailable for this evening's meeting. Ms. Quaid now was unsure. I don't see that she's logged in. Has she come into the council chambers at all?
No, she's not.
Okay, I'm going to mark her absent at this time then.
If you could turn the speaker up just a little bit. I guess it'll give us a little bit of feedback, but we have three people, so we're in quorum today, so we'll continue forward. Those that can stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll move forward with the correction and/or approval of the city council minutes of meeting May 18th, 2021.
I move adoption of the May 18th, 2021 minutes.
Second.
All right. Can we have a roll call on that one?
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, on correspondence, Mrs. Bishop, anything from the community?
Yes, two things. One about PFASs in city water and testing, and a second was about sidewalk licenses and an issue that their sidewalk doesn't exist this summer because of some of the construction going on, so they had a couple of questions about that, and they may be here today also.
Anything else, Mrs. Curler?
I also got the contact about PFAS testing in the water supply. I received a contact from a city council member in Eau Claire asking about how we handle toxic smells, and then just received a contact today about invasive yellow flag iris in the mill pond. It's not native, apparently.
All right, and the only other thing I had in addition to those was the big Santa Claus in the city commons area. They're moving forward with trying to move that into city council voting, so we should see that down the road here, so. Let's see, did Steve or Michelle come online? Doesn't look like it. So we'll continue and move forward. The next thing we have is questions and public comment. So we do have a public hearing today, so I'll read through that real quick. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you are asked to hold your comments until the public hearing. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda. If you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open law discourages, open meeting law discourages action by council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes and state your name and address when stating your comments and fill out the sign-in sheet provided. All right, is there anybody here in public that would like to comment? Seeing none, anyone online? Anybody online? I don't. All right, so we'll move forward to the city manager's report. Steve, it looks like you got some things here.
I did provide a second memo and a series of three related to the audit report. So this one was called Solvency in the Public Sector. And I also provided the treasures reports and the budget and capital reports for the month. That was it. Is there anything you want to ask or?
I have a question. Steve, well, first of all, thank you for providing the budgets that I think was, since I've been on the council, that's my first glimpse of seeing all, you know, what's in the budget and how it's progressing so far. Just one question, in the capital budget document, the very last item was a parks item related to Sandy Beach, and it looked like there was no budget for that, but about a quarter million dollars was spent, so I'm hoping that you can explain that, but it got me curious.
Yeah, so what happens is that was budgeted last year, so what we do is put it into a holding fund, and then we just continue to spend out of that. So we note it on here, but it doesn't count against this budget.
And that, I assume, was for the boat landing, the work that was done this spring? Okay, thank you.
Technically, it's all pass-through, that was all grant money.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Steve. All right, so here we need to accept the minutes from the committees. So we have a council member board report and acceptance on minutes from the Joint Rock Lake Committee of April 7th, 2021, and the Planning Commission of March 23rd, 2021. Do we have a motion to accept?
I move to accept these minutes. Second.
These ones don't need a motion or a second. These ones just get accepted and placed on file, but this would be an opportunity for any council member that wanted to make a board report on any of those minutes being accepted.
Thank you, Misty. Any further comment there? All right, thank you. Moving to council business, we have some appointments. Do you want to read those, Misty?
Council President Chair Appointments, William Logathatis as Parks Board Chair, Pamela Lazarus as Plan Commission Chair, and Todd Temperley as Zoning Board of Appeals Chair.
All right, so I think we do need a motion on this one.
I move that we adopt the slate of candidates appointed by the chair, by the president. Second.
All right, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
And now we have the city manager appointment?
City manager. Did you want me to read that one for you, Steve, or?
Yep, go ahead.
City manager's chair appointment, Russ Christensen, Police and Fire Commission Chair.
All right, any comment or move to motion?
Yep, please.
Move to motion.
I move to accept the city manager's chair appointments.
I second that.
Roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, the next item on the agenda is miscellaneous licenses, and we'll take these one by one, because there may be some questions and comments on each of these. The first one is a liquor license renewal and agent change for Dogan Corp., I'm probably going to mispronounce this, Dogan Corp. LLC, Ira Khan. Do you have any other comment or anything to add to that, Misty?
I did prepare motions for these ones, so I'll go ahead and read the title on this one.
All right, thank you.
City Council Motion 21-6-1-1, authorizing the granting of Class A renewal liquor and Class A beer licenses to Dogan Corp. LLC, DBA Dollar General, 528 East Lake Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin, and appointing Imran Khan a successor agent. This is just a regular renewal, there's no other change except for they did change their agent, which does require council approval. I did do back, or have the police department do background check on it, and they didn't find any reason to not appoint Mr. Khan as the successor agent.
Can we have a motion, and then we can move to our comment section?
I move to approve motion 21-6-1-1.
All right. Do we have any comment on this? All right, let's move to a roll call vote then.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, Misty, the next one is Pyramid Event Venue. Can you review that as well?
City Council Motion 21-6-1-2, authorizing the granting of Class B beer and Class B renewal liquor licenses to Pyramid Event Venue LLC, 117 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. This one is separated out from the consent agenda. They did request the premises description change to include Sidewalk Cafe, which has been approved and is also up for renewal this evening, and they're also looking to have their, the back deck, which goes out their rear exit, to be included, so if customers go out back there, they can take their drinks as well and be covered.
All right, can we get a motion?
I move adoption of motion 21-6-1-2 regarding the liquor license renewal and premises, modification for Pyramid Event Venue.
Second.
Thank you, is there any comment?
I have a question, either for Mrs. Quest or Mr. Drescher, and my question will be the same for the, what's the next one, the golf course, yes. With the premises change, do we need to make sure that that matches what the state has already approved, or does that not matter for our agenda here?
Do you want me to take this Dan, or did you want to? I can't hear Mr. Drescher.
I'm getting up and ready. Well, Misty, I guess I was going to answer, but if you'd like to, you may.
The city council is the one who actually approves the licensed premises, their description. We're not looking to actually really modify it, just during the renewal, they requested a different language to include that, so I don't have anything that the state would need to verify or change as well. Now, the difference being, I'm wondering, is if you're thinking about when we did Lewis Stations, premises description change, because they are a winery, they're permitted through the state, they don't receive the wine portion of their liquor license from us, they do the beer only, they're a little bit different setup than what Pyramid Events and the golf course would be.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comment? All right, can we move to a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, and the next liquor license is Lake Mills Golf. Can you read through that, Misty?
City Council Motion 21-6-1-3, authorizing the granting of Class B beer and Class B renewal liquor licenses to Lake Mills Golf LLC, 800 South Main Street, Lake Mills, Wisconsin. Again, this one changes, there is a renewal, they did request different language for their licensed premises. This was based on a conversation that I did have with the owner and agent, making sure that they're fully covered, their parking lot wasn't covered typically, we don't see that in a lot of licenses, but coming off of the course that it's sort of establishment, I could very clearly see individuals walking off the course to put their golf clubs away, and the course in general. So I did make that recommendation that they request this be changed to include the entire premises, just to be sure that everything is covered. There's been, again, a little bit different than just your regular licensed establishment.
Can we get a motion?
I move to accept motion 21-6-1-3, authorizing the granting of Class B beer and Class B renewal liquor licenses to the Lake Mills Golf LLC.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any comment or questions?
I have one again for Mr. Drescher. Is there any legal issue for the city with these licenses extending to the parking lots, or is that solely on the business?
Well, I don't know if it even actually falls on the business. I mean, it can be a license, part of a licensed premises, what a consumer does after that if they get into their car and travel, that is an illegal activity if it enters the roadway. I don't think this is an issue, and I think with regard to the golf course, it's a good move. You do want some control over it, at least their premises are clearly defined as either golf course, and then their parking lot is pretty well established. We haven't seen activities like tent parties or anything like that in these golf courses before, or these particular licensees before, and we'd need, like, you know, special event permits and stuff like that if they were going to put up a temporary structure for commercial purposes, or if there were propane heating tanks and stuff like that, different things where a permit would be required. So on its face, no, I actually think these changes are a good idea for these particular
Any other questions or comment? All right, Misty, can we have roll call?
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, thank you. So now we're moving into the public hearing for the Sidewalk Cafe license renewal. Is there any comment from the public? Both in person or online? All right, seeing none. We'll move forward, since that is on the agenda down below, we'll vote on that down below. So the next section is consent agenda, and you can see everything listed here. These are items that have already been considered in the past and approved, and no changes, I don't believe. Is that correct, Misty?
That is correct. Nothing that'd be significant of an agent's address change, I didn't find that that was a reason to bring it out. On the three that did have changes, I did pull out that were significant when it came to voting changes.
So if I can get a motion to include items 1 through 6 on the consent agenda, and then we'll have discussion, and if there's anything that needs to, that you want to pull out and talk about, we can do that individually, otherwise we'll vote on this as a whole.
I move to approve items 1 through 6 on the consent agenda.
All right, is there any questions or comment on this? All right, seeing none, let's move to a roll call vote.
Mr. Waters?
Aye.
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Motion passed 3-0.
All right, so it moves us to the item F on the agenda, which is the WPPI Energy Annual Update, and I think Mr. Peters is with us today from the WPPI, he's the president and
Now we're live?
I think.
I appreciate time on the agenda tonight. Really, if you have any questions at all throughout the presentation, I'd be happy to answer those. I'd much rather respond to your questions than kill you with a PowerPoint presentation, but I will use the slides to lead me through a conversation with you about WPPI and the partnership that we've had with Lake Mills since you joined in 1981. Go to the first slide. I've got Vicky Uwitt from my staff that's running the slide, so thanks, Vicky, for doing that for us. You know, this is one slide that I think I really don't have to explain very much. Lake Mills has been a public power utility for well over 100 years, and so you understand the benefits that you bring to your community with local control. You're making decisions right here locally about how your utility operates, the level of service, the rules, and how you implement the commission's rules, but you make all those decisions locally, it's not being done by some corporate organization outside of the area. Affordable rates. Lake Mills, as do many municipal utilities, have lower rates than most of the utility, investor-owned and co-op utilities surrounding your area, and that's true today, as it's been for many, many years. And then strong reliability. Municipal utilities as a group have better reliability than other utilities, simply because of the nature of your system, you're very compact, your linemen live right here in the city. Chances are, if you have an outage, they know about it before the customer does, and they know where it's at. You don't have to pull out a map and try to figure out where to go, they know where it is, they know the community, your manager knows the community, and so as a public power utility, you bring a lot of advantages to your community. Where we come into play, the next slide, WPPI is, we're a partner with Lake Mills. We focus on three aspects of service. Power supply, that's our primary focus, and what's the purpose behind WPPI being created back in 1980. We had 23 municipal utilities that came together in 1980 to form what is today WPPI Energy. Legislation had to be passed. Prior to WPPI coming into existence, a municipal utility like Lake Mills had very limited choices when it came to your wholesale power supply. You could either own your own generator, and there were some municipals that did, they owned maybe a small diesel generator, some of them were blessed to have hydro facilities nearby, so they could have a hydro facility, but that was very rare, and most of the time, municipal utilities simply had to buy their electricity from the investor-owned utility that surrounded the city. In your case, it was probably Alliant Energy. At the time, municipal utilities had no leverage, they had no bargaining strength, and when municipals started comparing their wholesale bills, even if they were served by the same investor-owned utility, there was no consistency. It was pretty much whatever the investor-owned utility needed to collect from that municipal, that's what they charged them, so there was no leverage, no buying power. And so munis across the country, and Wisconsin was no different, started forming larger organizations, WPPI is an example of that, to give the municipals leverage, buying power. Today, WPPI is about 1,000 megawatt utility. We are relative in size, we're larger than Madison Gas and Electric as a combined utility when you look at all of our members and WPPI. So we're a decent-sized utility, we have the ability to own our own assets, we can enter into much larger contracts, we have negotiating leverage that an individual member of WPPI would not have. Today, we're 51 members across three states. The other area that we focus on is services. Just like you came together to form us to get economies of scale on power supply, quickly pivoted towards the economies of scale that we could bring to services. And so when you look at the level of service that you can deliver to your customers, especially in the area of technology, you can do everything that a large investor-owned utility like Alliant, or like MGN, or even Webco could do. You have state-of-the-art billing systems, you have state-of-the-art metering systems, you have a meter data management system, a very sophisticated software package that takes all of that data and makes it available to you and your billing system, and available to your customers through a platform online like my account. Just as an example, the software for that billing system, for the meter data management system is well over $2 million investment. Lake Mills alone wouldn't have done something of that scale, but through WPPI, you have access to it just as if it was you alone. You also have the staff of WPPI that operates and maintains that system. We have a couple of full-time employees, that's their only position. Again, an individual member of WPPI would be hard-pressed to do something of that scale, but through the collaboration of WPPI and the other members, you have access to that just as if it were Lake Mills alone. And then finally, policy advocacy. We're not lobbyists, we're advocates for public power, which means we inform policymakers at the state and national level on issues of importance to us as municipally-owned utilities. You have a unique perspective amongst the three types of utilities, co-ops, investor-owned utilities, and municipals, and we want to make sure when policies are being made, whether it's in Washington or in Madison, they take into account our unique structure. I'll give you a really good example. Right now, at the federal level, they're talking about tax incentives for renewable energy. The way that the tax code is set up, since we're not-for-profit utilities, we get no benefit on the way the tax code is structured to incentivize renewable energy. So we can't, we could own renewable energy outright, but it'd actually be more expensive than buying it from an investor-owned utility that developed it and takes advantage, and then perhaps gives us a slightly lower cost. We know we would be more cost-effective to own it directly if we could have the same tax incentives, and so right now, Congress is looking at adding that on to an infrastructure bill that's going through Congress, so that we would have the same ability to own renewable energy directly and take advantage of the tax credits through a, either a tax credit that we could sell, or that we would get a direct payment from the IRS, so that it would be comparable to what an investor-owned utility would get. If it wasn't for the advocates that understand municipal utilities, that wouldn't be an issue that Congress would be taking a look at. So when we talk about advocacy, it's all about educating and informing, so that policymakers understand the issues as seen by municipal utilities. Quickly by the numbers, so we were formed in 1980, I talked a little bit about that. You guys became, you were one of our early members. We had 23 that joined right away at the very beginning, and then we had several others that came on in the next few years. We're now 51 members in three states. We're predominantly Wisconsin-based with 41 members, we have three in the state of Iowa and seven in the UP of Michigan. As I said, collectively, with 200,000 customers, when you look at all the members of WPPI combined, we're a decent-sized utility. We're right at about 1,000 megawatts, which is an average to a smaller utility. We have a total assets of 775 million and a budget of 436 million. We are really, we look towards the members to govern WPPI. Steve serves on our board, Paul Hermanson is an alternate, but Paul's involved in advisory groups as well. We have well over 100 volunteers that serve in some capacity, either on the board of directors, on an advisory group, on a task force that gives direction to WPPI. We're the professional staff, but we take direction from the membership, just like you take direction from your citizens, and when they're engaged, you're more effective at what you do. It's the same thing for WPPI. When our membership is engaged, when our board of directors is engaged, we're more effective, because we're doing what our members want us to be doing, and we're carrying out the policies that you would have us pursue. I think one of the questions that we get probably more, probably second most often is power supply cost. I think this shows pretty well how our power supply costs have done over the last five years and into the 2021, into our sixth year here. They've been very, very flat and very stable. They actually dropped from 2017 to 2018. They went from $76.75 per megawatt hour, which is 7.6 cents per kilowatt hour, down to $71 per megawatt hour in 2018, and from there, they've held relatively flat. That is a great benefit to you as a municipal utility. One of the things, your commercial industrial customers especially, everybody wants low rates, that's a given, but the other thing they want in their rates is stability. They don't want, you know, if you've got a business customer that's looking at doing three- to five-year planning, they don't want to know, they want to know, are my rates going to be pretty stable over the next three to five years? Do I have to worry about significantly higher costs coming up in a particular month or year? And what we've been able to do for your power supply, which is probably 80% of your customers' retail bill, is bring stability to that. And looking out even past 2021 into the mid-20s, the same picture is pretty consistent. Very stable, very competitive wholesale power supply cost. The pandemic, from WPPI's perspective, was an interesting, it's a huge challenge for all of us. And Lake Mills and our other members did a fantastic job of meeting the needs of your communities. You kept the lights on. You kept your employees safe. You were able to respond to the outages that you did have to manage. And so our municipal utilities did a fantastic job of meeting the challenges in their communities. From WPPI's standpoint, we saw about an 8% to 10% loss of load over that first few months of the pandemic in the early 20s. Through about the end of spring and we got into summer, the load went back up to what we were anticipating. And then when schools started back in September, the load dropped from what we were anticipating. We think mainly because schools weren't in session in person, and some businesses were still struggling. It was interesting, we looked across our 100, 125, the largest retail customers. Anybody that did pizza and at-home type products did a great, you know, had a booming year. Bicycles, Trek had their biggest sales year in the history of the company. And so we saw some of our retail customers amongst our members do extremely well. We had others that did struggle. We had some that were in the auto industry, providing parts. They saw some, a little bit of struggle. Some of the packaging away-from-home paper products, like the office toilet paper, they, you know, obviously had sales that were down. So there was, it was sort of a mixed bag. But through it all, WPPI, our rates stayed pretty stable. We actually finished the year a few, about a half a percent below our budget. So we were pretty stable throughout the entire ordeal. Some of the things that WPPI looked at early on in the pandemic, we were concerned about the impact that the Public Service Commission's order on no disconnects would have on our member communities. You were under an order where you could not disconnect for non-payment, yet you had to continue to provide service regardless of the customer. Typically, those no-disconnect orders during the winter only applied to residential customers, not commercial and industrial customers. This order was different, and it applied to all customers. So you could have an industrial customer or commercial customer that wasn't paying their bill due to the struggles that they faced, but they were still taking electric service. So we were very concerned that our members could be put into financial hardship due to that type of situation. So we wanted to look for ways for WPPI to step in and provide some level of assistance or support where it was possible. So a couple of things that we did. WPPI was anticipating about a $3 million refund due to overcharges related to a legal complaint or legal dispute over transmission costs. We knew those dollars were coming late in the year, if not this year, but we had the ability to say, let's go ahead and apply that, what we know or anticipate is going to come, and apply that to our wholesale bills to reduce costs for our members. So we took $3.1 million and advanced those refunds during the months of July and August, which is our highest-cost months, and felt that would have the most impact for our member communities and your customers. So we advanced that three and a half, or $3.1 million to help customers at a time we thought would be most beneficial. We also looked at what we could do more or less on a charitable side. We don't have a foundation. We literally have the money that our community and your customers have paid for your power bills. We do have reserve accounts, but we looked at what we had from a reserve standpoint and felt we could take some of that money and put it back into the community. So we took $500,000, half a million dollars, and developed what we called the Community Recharge Program and put that out basically into our communities and said, use it how best you see fit on a, on a local basis. And it was great to see the ideas that came out of our member communities from Chamber of Commerce bucks that were being used to, you know, help support other small businesses. We had one member that bought a whole bunch of Girl Scout cookies because they weren't able to sell Girl Scout cookies as effectively. Then they passed them out to all the different type of organizations, whether it was the fire departments, the hospitals, et cetera. So they were able to turn that money over and use it in different ways to benefit more than just the recipient of those dollars. So we felt really positive about the response, and we saw some really great outpouring of response from our members and your customers for those types of programs. Utility loan funds is something we took a look at as well. So WPPI has a loan program, but it's typically reserved just for infrastructure-type programs, like energy efficiency for municipal building, or if you were going to do a meter change-out and go to AMI meters, you've already done that. So those were loan funds that you would have available. We went ahead and adjusted our loan program that members could, if they needed to, borrow against that to pay their power bill. Again, it wasn't a program we hoped members would use, but it was there if a member got into financial hardship and needed it. We also worked with the state of Wisconsin to expand the, there's a land bank lending program that's one of, it's very unique to the state of Wisconsin. It's a multi-billion-dollar program that municipals can borrow funds for, again, infrastructure, but not operational costs. We worked with the state and the legislature to actually amend the law to allow municipals to access that for operating expenses if, if for pandemic-type reasons your revenues were way down and you needed it for operating expenses. Again, none of our members needed it, but it was there on the off-chance that you would. And then the technology that I talked about a little bit earlier with the, it really allowed us to see right down into the customer level, the types of customers that were struggling, were there ways, you know, we, we had a lot of information. Your community had a lot of information about your customers through that technology. And then the staff supported WPPI to be able to use that to gain insights about what was happening in your community from an electric utility standpoint. Next slide. So I talked a lot about the past several years and the most, this most recent year with the pandemic. Looking ahead, what do we see coming down the pipe for WPPI and our members? Well, first, continued stable power cost. As we look out the next four to five years, very stable, at or below the cost of inflation over the next five years. And so that stability will continue for a period of time. Continued change in our power supply portfolio. We have a 100-megawatt solar farm that'll come online this year, and we'll be adding that to our portfolio as we transition away from buying from investor-owned utilities under contracts, which is called a SLICE system, where we just get their average mix of power. We're reducing those kinds of purchases and looking at ways to add renewable resources to our portfolio. And this 100-megawatt solar farm is a good example of that. It helps us reduce our carbon emissions. Right now, we're on track to reduce our emissions by 45% compared to what they were in 2005. That's the date that's tied to the Paris Climate Accords. And we, most utilities across the country are focused on that. 2005 is the benchmark for now. And we'll have reduced our emissions by 45% by the year 2025, well on our way to getting to 50% to 55% by 2030. And then beyond that, we'll be looking at ways to get even further. Right now, the governor's task force on climate change, and the governor has a goal of getting to 100% reduction by 2050. WPPI supports that goal, and we'll be looking at strategies and techniques for us to get there after 2030, starting to look at what we can do with our portfolio to continue to reduce our emissions profile. And advanced business technologies, again, that's one area in the utility industry. We don't, you can't rest on your laurels. You know, we constantly see the need to upgrade the technology side of how you interact with customers, and that's going to continue, and WPPI will be playing a big role in that as well. And then forward-thinking services, just in general, what, you know, what role can WPPI play to help you be a better utility locally? And that's one of the things that we're going to be focusing on this year. We're in the middle of our next five-year business plan, and we're going to be sitting down with all of our members over the next two months, asking what are your priorities locally and what role can WPPI play in helping you meet your priorities over the next five On the meta-factors, you can see right there the front page of our current business plan that goes through the year, this year 2021. So I, I know Paul's aware of the business plan meetings, and will definitely, I believe he's planning on sitting in on those. We hope to hear a lot about what is happening at the local. This is your opportunity to tell us what is happening locally, what challenges you anticipate over the next five years. We'll hear more from you than you will hear from us about what we plan. We want to hear from you about your challenges and where WPPI can fit in. As I said, advocacy is a very important thing for WPPI and our membership. We have a couple of opportunities. The APPA Legislative Rally in March of '22. Last year, or yeah, I guess last year, this year it was virtual. The last in-person meeting I attended for APPA was February of 2020, and that was the Legislative Conference. And immediately, within a few weeks, we went into lockdown across the country, and that was the end of in-person meetings. We are now coming out of that. APPA is actually going to have an in-person conference in June and starting to get, you know, returning to the ability to sit down with policymakers and have face-to-face interaction with them. So we're looking forward to doing that. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. I'll leave this last slide up for you. Really, we see a really bright future for WPPI and the membership. I don't think that's changed from the 40 years that we've been in existence. Last year was our 40th anniversary. What a great year to celebrate our 40th anniversary is unlike any other. But we know we have a strong membership. We got through the worst of the pandemic by working together and leveraging the team at WPPI with your staff to make sure that you were able to do everything you needed to do and had the resources available to meet your customers' expectations. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll start with a question, Mr. Peters. Thank you for the presentation. Very insightful. Lake Mills is having a lot of residential growth here lately, a lot of strong growth. It probably wasn't as strong here the last, over the last 10 years, but here recently it's really surged. How would your organization help us through this period and review things moving forward?
Well, you've got a great resource sitting right here with Greg, your Energy Service Manager. One of the roles our Energy Service Managers can play is helping identify programs and services that you can deliver to your customers, whether it's Focus on Energy, Grants, whether it's new build programs, doing energy audits for customers, those types of things that you can bring to customers, doing rate comparisons. If you've got a developer that's looking at a new subdivision or something, you know, we can help show the developer what their electric bills could possibly be. So you can give them a lot of information. One of the challenges that we've had from day one is economic development per se. We don't have money to give out because it's your money. We'd just be shuffling it around our members. But what we do have is we have an expert staff, and we have information. And I've found that that is always something in high demand. Anytime a community has a lot of growth, they're looking for information, they're looking for design assistance for a new building, they're looking for direction on where can they go get other types of resources. So that's something that WPPI can definitely help with.
Is there programs in place that might help with infrastructure to help spread out the cost of infrastructure improvements?
We don't have any, other than our loan program, but that's typically tied to municipal-type project. Like if you were gonna, we did a loan a few years back for a lighting upgrade at a municipal high school. We've done energy efficiency projects for municipal buildings, but we haven't done any infrastructure loans for like an industrial development park or something like that. So that's a little bit different. I'm not saying we wouldn't do that, but it's not something I believe we've done in the past. I don't know, I don't think it fits within the programs that we have available.
Mr. President, if I could just jump in here with another perspective on that. One of the things that is occurring because of the residential growth as opposed to a nice balanced industrial, commercial, residential growth is it really changes our load profile. It, you know, we need customers that have high demand and high kilowatt-hour usage to really balance things out, and homes aren't that. You know, homes have typically high demand and not such high kilowatt-hour usage. So we are working very closely with WPPI, and we will be doing this beginning in November of this year, to take a very close look at our rate structure and if, if we're structuring our rates to take account of the fact that we've got such heavy residential growth. And that will take into account time of use rates. Should our facilities charge be adjusted, that sort of thing. So that, that's a really valuable service that we get from WPPI is to really help us make sure that our rates are working the way they should, both for the utility and for the customer.
Good comments, Paul. You know our services as well as I do. You're the ones that access them. And you're right, that's one area for a municipal that's growing a lot in the residential area, making sure your rates are in alignment. That same issue applies for increased solar, rooftop solar. We're working with a number of members that have concerns about increased rooftop solar penetration. What's that going to do to their rates? How should they structure their rates? Hopefully, within the not-too-distant future, we'll have the added benefit of what about additional EVs? When you have, you know, right now, the penetration of EVs is relatively small in any of our communities. I think our communities that are closer to our in and around Dane County probably will see more than others, but we're looking for growth there. Our Distribution Services Department can help communities, if that's a concern, on design. They can provide advice on how perhaps you could look at requirements for EV-ready homes, that type of thing, so.
Thanks, Paul. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions, and thank you for that last comment. As an EV owner, we installed our own, you know, high-power electrical, so that idea's appealing to me. I had a couple of questions. One, just trying to understand the roles. It sounds like there's a lot of collaboration and partnerships between the different entities. And we had all our schools here in Lake Mills in the last 10, 15 years did a lot of expansion or rebuilds where renewable energy was a part of that. So what was WPPI's role in those, or what can your role be in, you know, some of those kinds of larger community projects?
I got the guy that can answer that question since he was hands-on locally more than I am.
Hi, thank you for inviting us. Yes, I'm sort of the boots-on-the-ground here for WPPI Energy, but for Lake Mills Light and Water. And with regards to schools, we do offer a wide variety of things that we can offer. You know, from, we can arrange for high-level energy evaluations. I do the basic Level 1 walkthrough, energy audits, and do evaluation of billings and point out a lot of the obvious things. But beyond that, if a school district, if they feel the need to bring in specialists, say with HVAC controls to recalibrate things, anything like that, we have a grant funding program where we'll fund 50% of whatever the study is. And so we try to basically facilitate anything that a school would do to improve themselves and have a better energy profile. That includes renewable energy. We have a program called, it's a RFP, yes, RFP for Renewable Energy for Nonprofits. That would include government buildings, but also schools. Anything, any place that's a nonprofit would qualify for this. And it is a competitive bid program, so it's not a guarantee that you will get it, but it, it's a good option to try for, so.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Really, what we have is, you know, expert Really, what we have is, you know, experts in the field like Greg, and then back at the office, we have experts that he knows of and can access and leverage their expertise to deliver, again, information. And in some cases for schools, like he said, we do have some dollars through some grant programs.
I had one other question, just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on how you're able to provide such a stable pricing over the years without, I know, I'm sure there's probably a lot of technical information you could share, but I thought that graph was particularly impressive and, as you said, particularly for businesses that have planning horizons, that's something helpful for them to be able to count on a rate stability, but so how are you?
Yeah, how can you do that? Yeah. A couple of, our strategy when it comes to power supply is we don't put all of our eggs in one basket. So there's not an individual asset that we have that is more than ten percent of our generating capacity resource. So we don't have everything in one unit. We have multiple contracts over multiple periods of time. We have short-term, long-term, and intermediate-sized contracts, length-of-term contracts. And as we have found, as we have opportunities, every time we have a new contract that comes up, we're able to, when that one drops off, we're able to add a new contract or a new resource that reduces our cost when it's added into the average across the board. So a good example, back in twenty seventeen, we had a sizable contract with Alliant Energy. We were buying from them for a number of years. That contract terminated, we did not renew it, and it saved us about seventeen million dollars a year. And so that type of changeover in our contracts helps us add stability to our rates. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, that contract that we terminated, you saw that pretty sizable drop from seventeen to eighteen, that was one of the drivers that year. Tax reform, sometimes you're just a beneficiary of things that you have no control over. We're not taxable, but we buy from entities that are. And when the tax rate went from thirty-five percent to twenty-one percent, and they pass those savings on to W P P I through lower bills, we pass that right back on to you through lower bills. And so that was another area. We did some debt refinancing. Every few years, we have an opportunity, based on our debt structure, we have potential to do some refinancings, and we did one in twenty seventeen. We're looking at doing another one. We have a little over a hundred million dollars of debt that's callable in the year twenty-three. We're looking at, is there a way to advance that and refinance it earlier to reduce costs again? So it's not one thing that we do, it's a lot of things that come together. And I can tell you, I have staff, our power supply staff, if they can save literally a thousand dollars, they do it. If they can make decisions. So we have a whole basket of resources, but decisions have to be made every day to optimize those resources and bring value to the resources based on the way the marketplace works. And our staff works at that every day to optimize those resources, and then that helps us have stable power cost, and that's not going to change.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. In regards to Ms. Curler's question, I read an article sometime in the last week, and it talked about an energy company increasing energy costs to their customers fifty percent over the summer within afternoon hours. And it may have been in the Midwest, even Wisconsin, I don't quite recall, but of Texas, there you go, which was even more ironic. So in line with what you talked about to reduce costs and keep them stable, what are you doing this summer specifically? And if there's anything that, you know, happened in Texas that could happen here, how are you addressing that?
Yeah, Texas was an interesting, that was back in February when they had that huge price spike, and they're still, they're going to be dealing with that for literally years. W P P I during that signed time period in February, we had that really cold snap. We saw prices that were ten times higher than what we normally see in the wholesale markets, yet when we look back over the month of February, our wholesale bills to our members was, I believe, about a percent lower than what we had budgeted. So we did not see that price spike because of the way we manage our portfolio. We had, we don't have an over-reliance on all-natural gas, which Texas has a lot of reliance on natural gas, and that didn't perform very well. So we, all of our assets performed very well. Our coal plants that we do own interest in ran very well. We did have gas plants that ran. We had one gas plant that, because of the price of gas, they actually switched it over due to the inability to get natural gas to that plant. They burned fuel oil, which we had on site. And so that resource performed very well. All of our renewable contracts, they all performed very well despite the cold snap. So all of our resources, again, being very diversified, allows us to maintain, you don't see big price spikes, and you don't, you don't also, you don't get the real low, low cost that you might get if you were a hundred percent reliant on natural gas and natural gas prices were really, really low, like they have been in the past. You might get a benefit from that, but the risk is you see what happened in February. Retail customers in some of those states right now, they had two- or three-thousand-dollar power bills, a residential customer for one month. I've talked to some joint action agencies like W P P I. They spent their cost of power for that one month was more than they had budgeted for the whole year. And so that's a huge spike to them because of the way their systems are built. We're not built like that. So we're, we already know what we need for the summer, it's already in our portfolio. We plan ahead, you know, one year, two years, five years, ten years, and fifteen years. And so we knew a few years ago what we would project to need this summer based on historical and projections, and so we're prepared. We don't anticipate anything. We can handle some price shocks, and you won't see a big jump in your wholesale bill. It's just the way that we manage the portfolio. We don't, we kind of operate in a band. You're not going to see really high highs, but you're also not going to see really low lows. We're going to stay in that, really, that stable band.
Could I just add one more thing to that one, too, also? I mean, Mike, obviously, you talk about the power supply and the diversity of that, but the membership is also very diverse. And, you know, we kind of complement with our different types of loads and where we're located geographically and that sort of thing. And so the fact that the membership or the different utilities have some diversity in their loads, and we are somewhat predictable, as Mike said, you know, they keep a very close eye on what we're doing and how things are going. And so they, there's a lot of predictability in their planning because of the membership staying in touch with them and knowing what the loads are. So it's not, excuse me, it's not just the power supply, but it's certainly the end-users that they know a lot about, and it becomes very predictable. And then my, just my last point is that we are built for, as Mike said, so many different types of weather, you know, the highs in the temperature in the summer and the lows in the winter, we're built for that. And the amount of energy that's required to get through both of those is there, and that's the benefit of W P P I and the planning of W P P I, that we don't have more of the worries that maybe some other southern states would have.
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Yeah, it's a marriage between your load and what you need and all of our members' load, and then us marrying up the power supply piece with that information. And that's, as I said, something that we actually do every day.
We have a very residential load, though.
Yeah, but I also, we have, you absolutely do. And then you get the benefit of us having members like Manasha and Kekana and Oconom Lock that have a higher concentration of industrial load. And so that helps us have overall a better load profile that actually helps all of our members reduce their whole cost stable. So yes, you are more residential, just like Cedarburg is mostly residential. But we also have on the other side that higher industrial. Now, our wholesale rates do give some, there's a demand charge and there's an energy charge in our wholesale rates. And so members that have a higher load factor, their average cost is slightly better than those that may have a lower load factor, that are more residential. It's a challenge, but from a power supply standpoint, we blend all that together, and you get the benefits of being part of a bigger utility.
We still have that big lump in the spring, in the summer, you know, August and September. And so it's, we tend to be a little bit on the high side for W P P I utilities, but for the municipal, or the publicly-owned ones in the area, or the privately-owned ones in the area, we're still very competitive or lower than they are across the board.
Yeah.
So generally, we get a pretty good deal for the type of load that we carry.
Right. Yeah, we went through a lot of changes on our wholesale rate, starting in twenty sixteen into twenty seventeen. We had a demand charge that was pretty much the same across, you know, all months of the year. That's not how our costs are incurred. We have some resources that literally are there just to meet that, you know, few hours each year of summer peak, but we were collecting those costs over the entire year. And so we looked at, how do utilities actually incur cost? And we, that's how we came up with the load, with our wholesale rate, so that the most of our demand costs come in those summer months of July and August. And so that's where we put, we tried to tie back to the philosophy and utility rate design of, you know, whoever the cost causers pay. And so we developed a rate design that, you know, puts those higher costs for those types of assets in the summer months.
Is there any other questions or comments? All right, Mike and Greg, thank you for joining us tonight, and Paul virtually, I guess, also for joining us tonight. Thanks for spending the night.
Yeah, Paul, I'm going to take, I'm going to take you on the road when I go to my next one of these, so you can be my additional info. That was really helpful, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you guys being here, Mike, and the update and the relationship. It's been fantastic for Lake Mills.
Yep, I agree.
And just wanted to add that I think Lake Mills really appreciates, oh, I know, Lake Mills appreciates the relationship with W P P I, so thank you for taking the time and giving us a great update tonight.
No, truly is a partnership. We're not a vendor, we're not somebody that you go out and bid poles for. We're a partner. We're in this together for the long haul. You've got a contract with us that goes through the year twenty fifty-five today, and so we know that we're in this for a little, the benefit of your community, and anything that we can do to help, we're there to do that. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving forward, item G, which is the discussion of Lake, of Rock Lake Cemetery plot. I know that we're tabling that still, we're getting some survey work done, and we're going to bring that back here in the near future, so. Item H, Resolution Twenty-One Thirty-Three. Misty, can you read that?
City of Lake Mills, Resolution Twenty-One dash thirty-three, condominium plot approval, Drumland Crossing Town Homes condominium.
All right, can we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Twenty-One Thirty-Three regarding approval of the condominium plot for Drumland Crossing Town Homes. Second.
All right, I know we have a lot of attachments related to this one, but I'll turn that over to the city and see if there's any comment from any of the administrators.
Should I go? I got it, okay. Drumland Crossing is on South Main Street. It used to be some commercial development down there along what's now the bike trail, used to be the railroad tracks. We've been working with the developer down there for several years. We went through the initial phases of the development and got those all approved, and they got prepared to go ahead. They are now finalizing that with a condo plat, so this is like a final plat. Everything they had done before is like a preliminary plat. So now we're just trying to make sure that everything is in place, that all the agreements and declarations are ready to go.
And it has gone through the planning, plan commission? Yes, okay. Do you have anything to add, Dan?
On this one, I did add an easement that was recorded in February. It wasn't completely shown on the final condo plat. We did receive an updated condo plat today, and that, the easement that was recorded is clearly defined in the condo plat itself. So we have a correct document. It was a little late in the game as it did come today. The planner's memo kind of contemplated that by saying, if there are issues with easements, we want to have the ability to correct them on the condo plat. There really isn't an issue. The easement was recorded prior to this, so it's clear, it's in good form, and I think the plat itself is ready to go.
All right, any questions or comments?
I do have a question, and I'm not sure who it's for, but on the plat that we received, there's a utility easement, you know, that's shown with hash marks. And on the east side of the property, it looks like it extends south and actually goes onto the D N R property, and I'm assuming under the bike trail. Am I reading that right? It just wasn't clear what that, that hash mark continuing onto the next property, what that was showing.
It shows water and electric, both crossing to the south side. It allows us to loop into that area from South Main Street. There's another development contemplated on that lot there, and the two of them tying together and then tying in gives us a loop through there to give better power supply and water supply.
And so does the city already have an easement from the state for the part that goes under the trail?
We do.
Thank you.
This may be for Mr. Wilkie. On the east side of the property, I know that the setback was supposed to be twenty-five feet, and with this plat, it's only twenty-three feet. Is that setback, being only twenty-three feet, does that encroach on that easement at all, and does that affect the city's use of that easement?
No, we contemplated that when we did that, and so we actually set those to be matching up with what's there. So no, it didn't impact us at all. That's why we had to go through the first preliminary plat, was is to set all the adjustments or changes that would be made to the approval. And if I remember correctly, that was improved in November of last year. So, yeah, I know it, it meets all the requirements for the easements and the setbacks. It's a little bit out of, in fact, that's why we had to have an approval last year, was that one item set us aside. Otherwise, it would have just been a sign-off on it, and we could have approved it, other than finalizing the condo plat.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions or comments? All right, Misty, can we have a roll call?
Mrs. Bishop?
Aye.
Ms. Curler?
Aye.
Mr. Water?
Aye.
Motion pass three-zero.
All right, that moves us to item ten, recommendations for future agenda. Any recommendations?
It sounds like the city should discuss what our priorities are for W P P I, and maybe the city council needs to come up with a resolution for that before our city representatives' meetings with W P P I.
All right, any other comment or recommendations? All right, seeing none. I move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.